I would like to call to order the council meeting for Tuesday, December 4th of 2018. If we could all please stand for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being honest.
Madam Secretary, may I please have your call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Rebecca Smith, Derek Perry, Sonia Sanders.
Here. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the meeting workshop minutes from November 20th of 2018? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or edits? Hearing none, the ayes have it, those meeting minutes are approved and passed. Earlier this evening, we had an executive session pertaining to personnel matters. Next order of business we have are the presentations, and we'll begin with the Citizen Leadership Academy.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'd like to present to you the sixth cohort of the Citizens Leadership Academy. This brings our participants to 100 in the last five years, this is the last, I'm sorry, the last evening, and they're doing their group presentations. Last year, we initiated the group presentations as part of the Citizens Leadership. Tonight, we have two presentations for you. The first group is going to present recreation programming initiatives, the second will be community engagement. So I'll have the group come up to present the first presentation to you. Do you want to speak up here, just speak up here? Right here, you say you want to speak. So we have Laura, Bev, Harry, and Red here with the Citizens Leadership. And whenever you're ready, just let me know.
Hi, I'm Laura. I'm a resident of the Norris Town Council. We have a town hall that has been held by the Norris Town Council for years. It's a long after that future to be closed down. Something I've said because that we picked up, it might be a benefit of people to watch out. Thank you.
My name is Harry, and Laura is a Norris Town resident. I'm a new resident, and the group, we have a kind of a mixed group, and as part of our leadership kind of training, some of you can't do that presentation, but we decided that that PAL Center was worthy of some time and some initiatives, and I know that you probably have some after we cue Mr. Crandall Jones to speak about it. So our group thought was that the PAL Center has had historic impact on the youth of Norris Town, and with the closure, though, some of the people that were in our group felt that there had been a loss by the community, and that we needed to encourage a new direction. And when it closed, there was a shift to the George Washington Harbor Center, and some of the local residents had a sentiment of not wanting to see that recreation center move its position in the community, and so with the acquisition of the PAL, we thought that there needed to be a new buy-in and new trust by the community in that recreation center. So rather than just creating a recreation center for youth, which was the PAL Center had traditionally been, we looked at a new approach, a reinvention, or a holistic Norristownian view for the rec center, and trying to incorporate it into a larger plan for Elmwood Park, to try to make a cohesive park system, kind of like Fairmount Park is, there's a lot of different things that go on, rather than just a recreation center, that would be a draw for families, seniors, and a place to build community in Norris Town. So in the facility improvements, we thought that a walking path that runs from the back of the PAL Center, to the baseball, through the baseball field, into Elmwood Park, with a crosswalk, traffic safety device on West Stairager. Have you ever tried to walk across West Stairager? Kind of a, taking your light in your hand there. So this would give safer access from the north, east, and west side to the entire park system. This is the current area, there's plenty of room between the creek and the baseball field, but it's full of a lot of foliage trees and other things. But if you look at the far side, and this report we got is more explanatory of what we're doing here, but that brown area would be a new walking path that would lead you to the rest of Elmwood Park from the PAL Center. This is just the area. And then you come to the Stairager Crossing, and so a walking path that runs from the back of the PAL Center to this area would be, would need some traffic safety. So we envision a crosswalk put in there, and one more. And of course, flashing lights, those are solar powered, so in custom municipality, anything. We just, my wife and I just saw those in Virginia recently, so we put those in as a safe way to get across that. Now, I know people who are trying to get through town really fast will not like that, but ultimately, it hems the park into one cohesive unit. Also, we thought the playground could use refurbishment. We hope for a potential grant to keep Norris Town beautiful, which is an active participant. And then, if we were to extend that walking path from Stairager all the way to the Bocchi Quartz, it would create a half-mile walking path, and if there were signage to bring it back onto Harding Boulevard, we would have a one-mile walking path to the community. Other improvements we'd like to see would be Wi-Fi access at the rec center, a dog park for people to properly handle their dogs, rather than wherever they want in Elmwood Park, a picnic area along the Stony Creek to take advantage of the beautiful scenery, a fishing platform along the Stony Creek, maybe sponsored by the Stony Creek Anglers, and encouraging area nonprofits to participate in the cleanup and maintenance, like the Norris Town Garden Club could improve the grounds around Elmwood Park Rec Center, and have maybe Habitat for Humanity and Keep Norris Town Beautiful to improve the playground or hopefully playground. Also, a reflective space along Stony Creek, and possibly, there's a baseball field that looks like it hasn't been used in years, right next to the rec center, so we thought maybe if we could get area nonprofits, because Norris Town doesn't lack for nonprofits, so maybe a little more buy-in into a neighborhood park by the nonprofits, to start maybe a softball league, help create community there. Of course, the traffic safety crossing, we, I walk along Harding regularly with my dog, and I noticed that there isn't one crossing area on Harding Boulevard to get to the park, so even though it's maybe considered a neighborhood park to the north end, there really is no safe way of getting there from anywhere on the north or east side to get to the park. You kind of have to run across the street. So we envisioned a crossing at the already three-way stop at Ferdinand Street. Other program proposals would be senior and youth fitness, which Mrs. Genardi has spoken about to us, bicycle clinics, an art initiative there to celebrate Norris Town's status as the most diversified municipality in Pennsylvania, a great achievement. I think that we came by maybe accidentally. One word, block party, okay, that's two words blurred together, and after Mr. Crandall Jones spoke to us last week, we know that we would have public permitting, all the vendors would be licensed, we would have $3 million worth of liability insurance to do that. Youth enter, enter, I can't even say it, I forget. Can you say it for me?
Entrepreneurship.
Thank you. And citizens classes, something similar to the classes provided here and at Roosevelt High School, like a mini citizenship academy for youth, senior citizen technology clinic may be run by Norris Town Area High School Club, rental income from pavilions and Elmwood Park and the Elmwood Park Rec Center, craft shows to highlight local handicraft talent, demonstration clinics on gardening, vegetable, flower, and pollinator gardens, which follow-up, we could have competition and award ribbons for Norris Town Urban Gardens. A new vision. This is the current, you click through it, victory. This is the current grounds around it, this is where we envisioned a lot of activity. So maybe a little picnic table by the creek, pavilion that could be rented, and a fishing pier off the creek for the, sort of a little dog park. A pollinator demonstration garden, and fitness. That's our current vision for the rec center, and we believe Red's going to speak to what that could do for our community. I think I have one or two more. Quotables.
Hey.
So I have two quotables, one from our distinguished manager. "A strong recreation program is part of what enhances community pride and makes Norris Town an even more desirable place to live for existing residents and those interested in becoming residents. Recreation services is a vital component of council's strategic plan to provide more for Norristownians than we agree." Also, the Honorable Sondra Sanders. "It has been a longstanding goal of municipal council to expand recreational services for the residents of Norris Town." So Red would be.
Thank you, Harry. I wanted to say that I had some ideas to pitch to the city, you know, what was such a thing we had about here, so not to mention, I don't know, I don't know if it's part, and it seems that now, the best thing I thought was to manage it, and I think that we have a lot of city, they want to bring up, they want to drive a lot of cars, but it's something that we have to do. That's pretty much, we listen to all the parts, we do some, some care, we do, we do people who are living, who are, I think a lot of people behind that, they seem to, they are trying to, I don't think, I'm, I'm telling you, I wish, I don't know, I don't feel, please, I don't understand, because I just feel like people, that's pretty much it, as far as recreation. Thank you, group one.
And as you can see, they put a lot of work into these presentations, all their information has been knowledge they've received from department heads, they've met over the eight weeks they've been in the program. So group two will be community engagement. You guys good?
Use the microphone, please. Thanks.
Good evening, council. We don't, we don't have handouts like our esteemed colleagues, but we'll do our best here, okay? All right. I need somebody to do this. Technologically limited. Okay, we've been charged with Community Engagement Project. And first of all, my name is Leonard Tompkins.
My name's Christine Fleming.
And again, we have the Community Engagement Project. We've been charged with this, and we're very excited what we have to present to you. Okay? So anyway, Norris Town is really great. Can I get a amen? All right. But you know, sometimes a negative perception persists at times. You know, when you talk about Norris Town, some people, as my friend just said, sometimes they say, oh, not Norris Town. But we want the people in Norris Town to speak up and take pride in their community. So our idea is to develop a branding campaign. We want to focus on highlighting our unique strengths and assets. You know, the goal is to build our pride while boosting confidence in our different communities, especially among our youth. So we would seek to support civic leaders, faith-based groups, business community, neighborhood groups, and others, help us to spread the campaign to their respective constituents. This will culminate in having a Norris Town Proud Day.
And this is a, like, sample logo that could be used for the campaign of sorts, and I tried to keep it in line with the current branding and the art that Yellow was inspired by the Beehive on the.
On the press?
Yeah. And we just want to get into some details on how we would go about doing this, and also, just a fun fact, and to build on pride in Norris Town, Gritty was actually created at Character Translations on Noble Street.
In addition to that, if I could just add a little bit, in addition to that, we have several people, famous people, who come from Norris Town. We want to use that also, we want to make sure that we, people understand that, there are great people and great things being done in Norris Town.
So we were thinking about, you know, having community come together for a block party near Main Street, or near the Elmwood Band Show, just so it's accessible and easy to get to, and to gather more people, probably the spring or summertime would be the best time. And then we would just definitely have activities so that people feel part of the community, and they take part in maybe face painting, games, and then prizes and things like that. But then they can also get involved in any kind of projects that may be going on. Sorry. So basically, it's just to get the community involved, take pride in their community. Again, we would call on local establishments, civic associations to possibly donate or get involved. What else?
We also didn't know if there was any funds available in the municipalities that could help contribute to carrying out an activity like this for the community, so.
Well, we would look to raise funds by having advertising rights, giveaways, things of that nature, look to raise funds to be able to do this. The whole concept of this is having people feel proud about being a part of Norris Town. You know, as we sat in some of these meetings, we heard from some of the leaders how, you know, sometimes Norris Town gets a bad rap, how sometimes being a county seat, and one of the things is that at times, people dump people in Norris Town, and they look at Norris Town as a dumping ground. We don't want to be thought of that. We're much more than that, and we want our people to know that we're much more than that. So this was involved with citizens and doing things and feeling proud about themselves. So if we would go out to churches, and we would go out to different communities and different organizations and talk on that manner, and come up with some bumper stickers, T-shirts, magnets, some kind of swag, if you will, to be able to offer people and feel better about themselves, about Norris Town.
So we're saying, let's work together to inspire the next generation and ourselves to truly be Norris Town proud.
And I thank you to group two. So now we'll do the certificates with President Sanders.
And if you just stay up there. Our next participant is Harry Kaiten. And our last participant is Kate Buss.
So if I could just comment, I think you all should give yourselves a round of applause. Certainly, your eight weeks have paid off. I heard during the presentation how you talked about permits, and you talked about public safety, and walking through crossways, so you're off to a good start. On the behalf of council, we thank you, and we hope that we have some volunteers for some of our vacancies. We can't stress enough that we're always short of volunteers, so hopefully, some of you will sign up and partake and continue to have a vested interest in Norris Town. So thank you again.
At this time, I'm going to derail from our agenda, and I'm going to start with the ICMA Excellence in Local Government Program Award. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. Counsel, at this time, I'd like to introduce you all to Ms. Stephanie Mason, who is not only the Regional Vice President for the International City County Management Association for the Northeast Region, but she also is a fellow Pennsylvania manager and colleague. She happens to be the manager, town manager of Doylestown Township, and a valued colleague of mine, and one of the first Pennsylvania managers that reached out to support me once I came to this state. So with that, I'd like to introduce you, Stephanie, if you come to the podium.
Thank you, Crandall. It is an honor to be here tonight and share with you this award that was presented at the ICMA 104th Conference in Baltimore to Norris Town. It is a Program Excellence Award for Strategic Leadership and Governance, and it's presented to the Borough of Norris Town as well as your Borough Manager in recognition of your local economic revitalization tax assistant program. And it is just a wonderful program. There are 10,000 members in ICMA internationally, and these Program Excellence Awards are very competitive with very large communities across the country and internationally applying for them. So for Norris Town to win this award is wonderful, it's exciting, your program is fantastic, and the results, and it has been seen, you know, by 10,000 members of our organization, and it certainly goes to the excellence of your council and your manager, and I'm happy to bring forth the plaques that you can display proudly to your community. Thank you.
Madam President and Counsel, if I may take the liberty, I also want Jane Masanye to join us at the podium. We could not have an Excellence in Lurda program in anything related to economic development without Jane, and she joined us at the conference in Baltimore and represented us there as well, so please, join us in.
All right, council, I'm back, and I am excited to present the new and improved municipal Norris Town website. This website is a more robust, interactive, engaging website. As you can see, it's colorful, it's user-friendly, there's a mega menu here, we have things a little more organized than the last website. Even though that was an award-winning website, we heard from the community that we needed a website that was even more interactive and even more engaging, and I think that residents. and even more engaging, and I think that residents are going to be happy and love this new website. So, let me just show you a few of the features. As you can see, these are icons. These are links that go to agendas, forms and permits, business and concerns, and I'll get more into them, but they're the most sought-after information that residents look on our website. We also have our hot topics, like the Capital Improvement Plan, rec, police, and of course, council information. As you can see, we're putting our best foot forward. We have our press releases, our highlights, budget information right up front where people can find it easily and they don't need to search. We have our calendar that has municipal meetings, activities, community calendars, so the community will still be able to submit their events on our website. We also have all our social media on our site, right up front where folks can see. We have the police, the fire, the rec, and the municipality's social media right up front and easy to share, and folks don't need to have an account with Facebook or Twitter in order to see these posts. So, I'm going to show you some of the other features here. We divided the departments, I'm sorry, let me start with the government. This is where all the boards and the committees are located, council members, right-to-know information. We even added information on the county of Pennsylvania. There's information on new ordinances, the departments are broken up, and we even added economic development here. This is the Norristown Now page. It is now redirected to this website. You could still use the norristownnow.org site, or you could come right up on the Norristown Municipal site. It's a one-stop shop for business and developers to take a look at what's going on. We have our announcements and our highlights, new businesses, like Swiss Farms. So, last summer, we had a listening tour, and residents told us, "We need to know that you're listening to us." So, we did just that. We found a website that did just that. So, residents are able to submit concerns and requests as easily as a click of a button. They can report tall grass, graffiti, find out information, request information through the Citizen Request Tracker. This tracker will go directly to the departments. It will inform them that a resident is asking for information or just giving us a heads-up. This will be an email that the resident receives, and they will know that we received the request or the concern. They will receive follow-ups and know that we are working on an item or have closed out the item. This is directly from the listening tour. This is what the community told us they wanted to have in their website and know that we are tracking their concerns and responding. They also want to be able to pay online and submit forms, and I'll show you some of the forms here. Now, forms are easy to find. They're located by departments. They're fillable. They go right to the department without having to print. They go as an email, and the person also gets a copy of their form. The notify-me option is the Get Notifications icon button. So, this is where residents, community visitors, can sign up to receive notifications through email about agendas, community events, press releases, really, rec programming. They sign up and they receive an email that, "Hey, the new agenda for the next council meeting has been posted." It's immediate. We can send out alerts through that way. If a snowstorm is coming and we're closing municipal hall, street closures, fire alerts, things like that. This is really a robust website that is able to provide and communicate with the municipal residents in a whole array of methods. This notification system is very user-friendly. Again, folks just need to sign up once and they will continue to receive messages as we post. And, let's go back to the homepage here. We also added a "How do I?" Things like viewing audits, budget, the agendas. We're just trying to simplify the website, things like apply for. These are really action items, things that people come to our website, and we're making it easy for them to find. As, Counsel, as you know, I have monthly reports where I have stats on what people are looking at, how often people are on our site. So, this is what they're looking for, these items. These are the most sought-after, they're easy to find, and again, it's with a colorful, interactive website. I really think that residents will find this easy to use and with a lot of information, and it's really what they asked us for, and I think they will be meeting their expectations. So, I encourage residents to sign up. It will launch fully tomorrow. I just wanted to give you all the heads-up and to see it first. There's any questions? Yes. So, this website will come with an updated app. The app will still be valid and also the app will probably be live. The current app that we have now, that's not going to be touched for the next month or so until this website app goes into place, but we'll make an announcement for that. And you can do all things through the municipal app as well. So, that won't change. Well, we still have our TV access channel, which is just basic cable that comes with everybody's TV, Channel 22 and 965. We also have our new digital sign outside where we're posting information on meetings and obviously, information about alerts and closings and things like that. So, people can get information that way. And obviously, if they call, too, they could always call us and we would provide information to them. The alert system? So, I would place the alerts on there, yes. So, if there, obviously, if there's a snowstorm and there's a declaration of closures, we would have all those alerts there. So, it was just, this is a one-stop shop for the alerts, for social media, for information. This is really, you want people to come back to your website, obviously. That's where all your information is held. So, I would house that all in this municipal site. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. So, this, yes, this has phone option as well, just like the alert system that we have currently with the mobile app. You're welcome.
Is this PA-norristown.civicplus.com going to be the new URL, or is norristown.org?
No, this is obviously just the demo until we go live tomorrow. The norristown.org does not change. It will just populate with this information.
Just making sure, thanks.
Yep, no problem.
What are we doing to help our citizens who do not speak English?
So, the Google translator, if you see below here where I'm pointing, that will have the languages folks need. Let me click that button here. So, the translator, just like our current site, this has all the languages that people can translate on.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Does this update information when stuff is being sent to code, so they'll know exactly if the information was taken care of?
So, with the request tracker, code officials, staff will respond directly to the person that submitted the request. So, they'll know that they're currently working on it. You know, we may need a couple more days, that kind of thing, but there'll be an interactive engagement. That's part of what the request tracker does.
Also, part of the oversight we have is that we'll get a report in terms, and I'll be able to see how departments are responding as well. So, we will have that report, and we'll know, get an alert if something has been out of line for a long time or people haven't responded. It automatically will notify not only the department, you haven't responded, but a report comes to our office as well.
So, again, I'll just, oh, I'm sorry.
The website is amazing, looks great. I had a question about photo galleries. Will you have photo galleries included of some of our historic parts of the community?
Yep, there's a photo gallery here. I haven't changed the ones from the current site. They've moved over as well, and I'll just always add the photo galleries to this site as well. So, this has the same, that same photo gallery feature. All right, then I just encourage residents to please look on the norristown.org site tomorrow and sign up. If you have any questions, please call the Office of Information, Public Information, and I will answer any questions or walk you through the process of signing in. Thank you.
Gab, where'd she go? She left that fast? Oh, Gab. Gab, definitely wanted to say thank you for doing such a wonderful job on this, you and staff. You know, we definitely appreciate of it. We always listen to the citizens, and this is one of the things that the citizens want. So, we definitely appreciate you doing everything that you did. Thank you.
Thank you, and it was a combined, departments all. We've been working for eight months to bring you this beautiful site. I'm extremely proud, and I know they are, so, thank you.
Vice President Perry, do we have any announcements this evening?
No announcements, but does anyone have any announcements that they wanted? You know more than I do. Why are you looking at me? Councilwoman Scott Cooper.
Thank you. This coming Saturday, December the 8th, Help a Single Parent Foundation will be holding its second annual Ugly Sweater fundraiser at the Cedar Club on Germantown Avenue, beginning at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $25. You can see either myself or President Sanders for tickets. And this fundraiser is designed to provide the monies that are needed to help single parents at Christmas time. 100% of the funds are utilized for this event. So, we ask that you come out and support. If you cannot make it, we will welcome your donation.
Good evening. Wanted to share that the Norristown Men of Excellence will be having their sixth annual Community Awards Banquet, where they honor several people from the community in the areas of education, athletics, career, business, young achiever, and community engagement. I'll just give you a brief description. Jeanette Fernandez from Gottwells will be honored for education. Gabriel Savage, a Norristown alum, will be honored for education. Jonae Cook is a former Norristown Area School District tracker, field standout. She will be honored for athletics. Marcus Green is a professional basketball player overseas, former Norristown graduate, who will be honored for career. Erica Griffin is a local business owner, also a former graduate of Norristown Area School District, who will be honored for business, her diamond doll salon. Jay Atlas is a community activist who does a lot around human trafficking, and he will be honored for community activism. And you have Greg Byrd, who is a local motivational speaker, as well as a Norristown alumni, who will be honored for community engagement. The event is at the Carver Community Center, Saturday, starting at 1:00 PM. I have one more event to share. The Elmwood Lodge, number 438, the Montgomery County Temple, number 250, Masonic Hall, on the 400 block of Basin Street, will be having a Feed My Fathers Children event on Christmas Eve. That event will start at 1:00 PM and it will end at 5:00 PM. Come out and enjoy a home-cooked meal with all the trimmings. And any information, you can reach Butch Milligan, the number 610-592-8286. That's it.
Yes, earlier, actually, late last week and earlier this week, I had the opportunity to promote the Student Leadership Academy. So, I presented to the Norristown Junior NAACP and also the students of Norristown Area High School, who support the Young Scholars Program. And at this time, we are just currently waiting to accept the applications. Thank you, Vice President Perry. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments this evening?
No, we don't.
Madam Secretary, do we have any communication this evening?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Are the appointments, which is Resolution 18-163, for the appointment of Norman Butts as Finance Director. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. Counsel, as you know, and have been intimately involved in, we have been several months now going through an exhaustive national search for a Finance Director. I am pleased to join you in welcoming Mr. Butts onboard as our new Finance Director. He actually began work on yesterday and is hard at his duties. As you know, but certainly for the benefit of residents, Norm is a very highly experienced professional, 30 years of service in finance and public service in New York, Pennsylvania, Texas, New Hampshire, Maryland, and Virginia. He's had, his experience includes being Director of Finance for the Borough of Carlisle in Pennsylvania, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Finance and Administration, the City of Richmond, Virginia. He's Director of Finance and Chief Financial Officer for the Town of Leesburg, Virginia. He's worked, again, in Montgomery County, Maryland, and New Hampshire as well, in Concord. Norm comes to us with an extensive education background as well, has a law degree from the University of New Hampshire School of Law. He is a Master of Public Administration from, he'll say, the Penn State University, okay, and in State College, and also a Bachelor of Science in Education from Cuts Town University, in Cuts Town. Norm achieved every gauntlet and went through every gauntlet that was set before him and did a fantastic job in interviews with the various panels and with the council, as you know. So, at this time, Counsel, we're putting forth Resolution 18-163 for Norm's appointment as our Finance Director for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Counsel, are there any questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, may we please have roll call? Sorry. Would a member of...
Sorry.
To appro... Madam Secretary, may I please have roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Rebecca Smith, Derek Perry, Sonia Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it. Resolution 18-163 is approved and passed. The next order of business we have is public safety pertaining to ordinance 18-07 for special purpose parking.
Thank you, Madam President. Ordinance 18-07, we're requesting to amend parking restrictions on the north side of East Marshall Street from a point 20 feet east of Willow Street to a point 60 feet east of Willow Street. This will allow us to have off-street parking for police vehicles so that we can safely unload and load prisoners back and forth to the municipal court building.
Thank you, Chief Talbot. Counsel, are there any questions? Councilwoman Brady?
So, occasionally, they're parked on the sidewalk there or double parked very often, so it's precarious at best. So, this is going to be a big improvement for us. There is some parking in the rear, but it's difficult to get in and out of there with the police wagon. So, this is a much better solution for us.
And is this taking away any existing parking that's on that street?
It is not.
Counsel, are there any questions? Council, are there any questions? Other questions? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 18-07, which amends the parking restrictions on the north side of East Marshall Street from 1.20 feet east of Willow Street to 1.60 feet east of Willow Street? Madam Secretary, may I please have roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Rebecca Smith, Derek Perry, Sonia Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it. Ordinance 18-07 for special purpose parking is approved and passed. Would a member of council like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor? The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned.